We also are streaming on YouTube at Town of Camden, Maine. For those wishing to participate, please go ahead and join the Zoom and put your hand up if you have any questions or comments. First item on the agenda is the public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody here who would like to comment on any of the non-agenda items? Seeing that there are none, public hearings. Again, note that new ownership requires a public hearing for the first five years, and we have the application of Rick Johnson, the Camden Hideaway Inn for renewal Class V Bed and Breakfast Wine License. Is there anybody here to represent Rick Johnson?
You don't have to.
You are welcome to.
It's such an opportunity.
Rick Johnson.
Okay. And Rick Johnson, where are you from?
Portland, Oregon, Camden.
Okay. Great. Do you have anything to say concerning your Camden Hideaway Inn renewal?
No, just that we're appreciative to be here and we had a great first year and looking forward to our second.
Super. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any one from the public wishing to comment? Awesome. Well, now we know what's next then for the application of Meanwhile LLC, doing business as Paper Plane for renewal Class I Restaurant Liquor License. Anyone here from Paper Plane who'd like to go ahead and discuss their license? No? Okay. Any questions?
No.
No. Application of Norm Bega Hospitality, the Norm Bega Inn, 63 High Street, for renewal Class V Bed and Breakfast Wine License. Any questions, comments? Anyone representing? No?
Bed and Breakfast Wine License, this is kind of a funny name.
Well, it is.
Are you ready for motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the applications for the Camden Hideaway Inn, the Paper Plane, and Norm Bega for the licenses specified.
And I will second that.
Any other comments or discussion?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Rick. And then for a vote, and just so people in the public know, yes, it is true, there's only three select board members here tonight, so any action does require all three of us to go ahead and approve an item to effectively meet the forum standard, just so people know that that is the case. All right. And for a vote on the motion. Yay. That passes 3-0. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything that either of you see on the consent agenda that requires further discussion?
Just a point of order. I think that you have some folks here that might want to just speak to an item on the consent agenda, so you probably don't need to pull it off, but you can just give them an opportunity to talk to it.
Sure. That being said, is there enthusiasm for someone to speak about any of the? We've got five different items. We've got the Businesses Blooming, Atlantic Avenue, Music by the Sea, Victor Lodging License for Buttermilk Kitchen. Voting hours in the Five-Town School District.
Eric Anderson, Board Chair for the Camden Area Business Group on behalf of Camden is Blooming. There's three new copies of the letter that I sent you, and I do apologize, there's so many different areas where 2004 gets changed to 2005 in just discussing the dates.
Or '25.
Yeah, 2024 to 2025. So that's just an updated version of the letter that you all received highlighting the third weekend in May, which is when traditionally Camden is Blooming has occurred, and that this requires an application approval by you for the townwide sidewalk sales. The reason I stand in front of you, just for a little clarification, I do believe last year, a member was no longer on the board, but had just said they'd like a little more, would have liked a little more information as it relates to this application, and I just stand in front of you saying, please tell me how to fill this out, because there's really no way to provide you with more information, other than this is an application for Camden businesses. So it is townwide. So if there's anything you'd like to see in the future, please just let me know, so I can get that corrected for you. But this would be to possibly continue our legacy of Camden is Blooming for sidewalk sales for Friday, May 16th, Saturday, May 17th, Sunday, May 18th, to allow businesses in Camden, no matter the location, to set up a sidewalk sale if they so wish. It's usually a great time for them to do a winter into spring into summer purge as they start to onboard new inventory. So is there any questions that anybody had about that? Other than that, we provide no other information, no other events per se that we structure like we do with Christmas by the Sea. This is really just partnerships with other groups that are doing things around town. May 15th, which is Thursday, kicks off the Art Walk for the year, and then we have the Camden Poetry Festival as well. And then we'll ask members and other publics to see if there's anything that's specific, such as the Camden Library, if they were throwing the events as well for children.
Is that the day of the Camden Arbor Day celebration?
It's May 20th.
Great. You guys always talk about blocking the sidewalks for wheelchairs and things like that.
Yes. No, I think the sidewalks are ample width, and everybody, I've never seen personally as I walk around anybody that's exceeded any spots. I mean, everybody's pretty modest.
Everybody wants, everybody else will get by anyway, so. No, I think it's great. Sorry about the moving target for the information requested. It's like, you never know what the select board is going to ask for.
Well, I love the application. It's a great idea, and it should be out there, but I just wanted to make sure that we do our due diligence on that application. It's just hard for me, because it is a vague ask. And I apologize.
It's pretty comprehensive. Thank you.
No, I think it's great. I appreciate that you guys do that, and I think lots of people enjoy it.
And if approved, what's on the backside is what gets sent out to all businesses, or what's on our email list. So it's exact by code with highlight from the Town of Camden on how to proceed, how to proceed safely. It talks about the obstruction of sidewalk, and then to be specific to the dates.
Great. I appreciate you doing the clarification of the dates. We were talking about that a bit before the meeting. So thank you for providing the updated version. And Audra, how would we get that updated version of this letter into the packet or into the record? Because it does show the right dates in this, that's something that we want to do. And, you know, thank you for putting that on, and hopefully this serves as a little bit of publicity for it as well.
The idea is to get people in downtown Camden prior to the big hit of the summer. The sales are usually unwrapping and going out in the water as well. Audra, do I just email it to you, or to Dennis?
I can just scan that.
Okay.
I couldn't believe how busy it was over the weekend, down a rainy weekend down here already. I was like, oh my gosh. It's like, why?
That's great.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Anyone here for any of the? Go ahead, Ken.
No, I have a question about one of the, I don't, I need an explanation of the county signatures for the warrant.
On the?
For the school district.
Let's first go through B, C, and D to see if there's, I was wanting to jump ahead. Is there anyone here needing to discuss anything concerning the Camden Rotary's closing Atlantic Avenue? Questions or concerns? No? Buttermilk Kitchen?
I feel like, oh, I forgot. Was that what you were thinking? Was the people here to talk about things, or is there still?
I just saw Eric.
Why don't we just ask if there's any, normally, once we start talking about the consent agenda too much, we have to pull things off.
Thank you for noting that. I just wanted to make sure we're covered in getting people what they need. All right. Your question concerning E.
So.
Pull that off of the consent agenda.
I think an explanation is okay.
Yeah, I can explain it pretty easily. It's a statutory requirement for select boards to countersign the warrants for the school district.
The language makes it look like there's be a vote on these topics, but we've already done the warrant, so.
Yeah, you're just voting to countersign, and then you sign it.
I see what, I mean, I.
It's one of those rubber stamp things where I know select boards don't like to do it, but you have to do it.
We actually have the right to not sign it, and then they have the right to hold us all personally legally responsible for not doing it, and you can let it all. But, so, I mean, I think Ken's right that we can go through that exercise. And it does kind of make it seem like when.
I would highly recommend not.
I'm not recommending that we do. I'm just noting that it doesn't, you know, the idea of signing normally comes with a vote, and.
Well, I think it's a good question to find out.
We're modernizing.
What the pieces are around that.
Yeah, it says a district budget validation referendum election. So what is the election? Is this the election?
No, no. So you countersign the warrant, and then they have their actual budget meeting where the budget gets approved.
But that language isn't, doesn't make sense to anybody, that countersigning of the warrant, it means like we sign off on the fact that that goes on a ballot.
They have their own warrant, and you're just providing the counter signature, and they have their own statutory process and responsibilities as a school board.
And warrant means ballot.
And then one of the steps in it is that the select board has to countersign the warrant that the school board.
So is there a separate ballot on Election Day, then?
For the school, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That answers my conceptual.
Yes. And schools and select boards all across the state are debating school budgets right now, and whether or not the select board has to sign off on it, and.
But in this case.
We have no such problem.
Do we have any motion concerning consent agenda to approve the consent agenda as it is?
Generally speaking, we've just been letting the consent agenda go without objection. I also agree that that could be a larger question, but in terms of fast practice, I love talking about this stuff, sorry.
So, anyway, from what I've, what I see, the consent agenda will go on as it is currently written. So we'll have something else to sign at the end of the meeting.
Right. Thank you.
Awesome. Select Board Reports. Who would like to go first?
I'd be happy.
Go ahead.
Happy to go first.
Those who speak first, go first.
Yeah, so I attended a couple different events at the Opera House, which I oftentimes, or I don't attend Opera House events as much as some people, but there were a couple really incredible ones. One was, both were fundraisers. One was called An Unexpected Gift, and several people in our community who have had cancer or known close family members, either survived or die from cancer, spoke, and it was really outstanding. There's quite a group of people on Mountain Street, actually, in Camden, that have all faced some really severe cases. And then the other one was a fundraiser for the Wayfinder School, which was Finding Our Way, where different people from our community give talks about, you know, sort of how they found their way. And both of those events had seats that could, you know, have still been occupied, and I'm probably speaking without sufficient knowledge about how the finances of the Opera House all work, but it did make me feel like, wow, is there something that we could do as a town to make some of these events more accessible when there are seats still available? Because I think a lot of people would benefit from getting a chance to hear some of this, and can the town make up that gap somehow? Or just sort of along the same lines as the snowball, you know, how can we make things increasingly accessible? The tickets were $20 each, and so I think sometimes, you know, for a family, it might be too much. It was a very reasonable fee for, you know, as a fundraiser, but, you know, is there something we can do as a town when there's seats available? The other thing that I'm excited to share with the select board is the moving forward of a plan that's been a long time in the making, which is to use some of the revenue that has been, excuse me, the money essentially that's been saved with our waste contract over Midco Solid Waste. We are sending all of our trash to a landfill rather than some of the other more arguably ecologically friendly options, and it's been a big savings, and there are a lot of reasons we made that decision several years ago, one of which was that we really want us to try to invest in meaningful diversion, not just things that make you feel better, but things that we know are really reducing waste. And so taking some of those savings over years, and we took proposals from one entity in particular called Two Story or Second Story Builders, and they're going to do basically an audit of our entire transfer station over about the next year to figure out all the different things that are coming in, not just, you know, different types of plastic and all of that, which is what we mostly focus on trying to recycle, but especially building materials, electronics, really trying to audit everything that is coming in, what has, you know, an environmental benefit if we save it, what actually has probably a monetary benefit, so we can figure out which things are being lost to the landfill or other places that could actually generate revenue. And it was a pretty impressive presentation from Danny Solomon over at Two Story Builders, and he gave an example of taking the public landing wharf that had been destroyed, as well as a house in Camden that was completely deconstructed over on Brookside Avenue, and how he and students used really every piece of this wood to do different projects. And he went through a lot of different things that different communities are doing, and so that's something that's going to be starting this summer. You'll see people there implementing the waste audit. There may be times occasionally when it might take a little bit longer to get through the gate, but the idea is to really be able to bolster that reuse aspect of our facility. And then the other thing was what I already mentioned, the Camden Conservation Commission in partnership with the library is hosting Camden's Arbor Day Celebration on May 20th at the library in the amphitheater, and I am blanking on the time for that right now. I think it's at 1 o'clock. But that is, we had declared it Arbor Day a few select board meetings ago, and there will be people speaking and reading poetry about trees and talking about Camden's street tree program, and there will also be the planting of another tree over near the library on the Atlantic Avenue sidewalk.
Great. Ken?
I don't have much to report. The Historic Resources Committee is still working on the preservation ordinance, and they would like to make a presentation to us. They promised a 10-minute presentation. Perhaps we can get that on the agenda for next time, but for tonight, that's it.
Okay. I do have one question that maybe Audra or Allison may know with Midco Solid Waste. Do you know the schedule for when they're doing the environmental hazard?
The Household Hazardous Waste Day?
Yes.
What a great question.
That is May 19th, I believe, but I'm not positive. I hope that you know.
I am going to, I'm going to find out by the end of the meeting, but we're actually doing, for the first time ever, we're doing two of those this year, because, and we're going to be doing it, our first one is, you're right, it's a different, it's a different day than normal. It's normally the third Saturday in June, and it's a different day this year, and I'm going to find that out while other people are giving their reports, but.
Won't have a lot of time.
It'll be on Sunday, rather than trying to do it on a day when the facility is open.
So that's a chance to divest of your paint cans and.
Actually.
And oil and.
Yes. Paint is actually free because there's a paint care program with the state, and it is, manufacturers are required to take those back, so really, you should be able to take those backs like Sherwin-Williams and things like that. But yes, overall, you know, pesticides and.
Motor oil.
Motor oil and old gasoline and things like that. It's very expensive, heavily subsidized, but still kind of expensive.
Great. Thank you. Audra?
All right. So in the town office, last month's shipments of the new pine tree license plates arrived, and beginning on May 1st, residents who register a vehicle for the first time or renew an expired registration with a chickadee plate will be given a new pine tree or number tree plate with a new set of numbers to replace their chickadee plate. So this is coming from the state, and I thought it was very silly until I was told that it has to do with scanning, a lot of scanning that happens, like through EZ Pass and for enforcement purposes, to be compliant with license plates that are providing this throughout the rest of the country. So that's why that's happening. It's coming down from the state. So if you'd like to keep the number on your chickadee plate or keep a vanity plate, you need to go online and reserve it. So custom plates will be mailed to residents before it's time to read-register, and the plate and accompanying letter must be brought to the town office to complete the process. So we've got more information on this and how it works under the News and Announcements section on the town's website, which is right on the homepage. You could also call and speak to someone in the clerk's office for more information. So town staff are also preparing for the annual 2025 town meeting that's going to be held on Tuesday, June 10th. Voting's going to commence at 8:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Building in the Fire Department Vehicle Bay on Washington Street, and it'll run through 8:00 p.m. There's 22 warrant articles, and that includes elections for new members of the select board and school board, and the warrant is all voted on by secret ballot. And there is an April-May newsletter that the town has posted online and emailed to people who signed up for it that explain all the different warrant articles. There's also an overview and explanation of all the warrant articles on the town website, and also the clerk's page of the website. So there's a number of places that you could go if you want to understand the warrant and see it prior to showing up and voting, or if you're going to vote early, getting the ballot mailed to you. So with the Fire Department, two firefighters, Andrew Scrivenich and Noah Carlson, have applied to participate in a paramedic program at United Training Center, and they're currently in the selection process. Three of our firefighters, Matt Heath, Derek J., and Jacob Wilder, recently completed a Fire Officer One Leadership Program, which was provided by the Maine Fire Service Institute at the Walderboro Fire Department. So Camden Fire and Rescue hosted an Easter egg hunt on Sunday, April 19th, in collaboration with Northeast Mobile Health Services and the Camden Public Library. It was a really successful event, and several hundred people participated, and planning's already underway for next year. There were conversations and meetings with Northeast Mobile Health to continue transitioning towards working together more closely. If the budget passes, as many people know from, if you tuned in any of the budget meetings where the fire and EMS budget was discussed, Northeast Mobile Health Services will still be our EMS provider, still our partner. They're going to have an ambulance that'll be stationed down at Camden Public Safety. It's going to be staffed half by a paramedic from Northeast and half by personnel from the Camden Fire Rescue Department. So it's a really great partnership. We're looking forward to it, and planning's underway to talk about how that'll transition should the budget pass. And this is a service that's not just provided to Camden residents, but also our partnering communities in Hope and Lincolnville. Beginning around 7:30 on Sunday night, Camden Fire and Rescue Personnel responded to a call to help two hikers who were lost with their dog at Camden Hill State Park. So there was a trio from Texas that set out at noon, and then they called 911 when they lost their way, and they did not know where they were, so they weren't really able to tell dispatch which trail they were on in the park. And rescuers were able to access GPS coordinates on their cell phone to figure out where they were. So this was a very successful rescue by both the Camden Fire Department, as well as Coastal Mountains Search and Rescue. Also, Northeast Mobile Health Services was there as well. So thank you to everybody who participated and everybody, it was a happy ending for all involved. In the Code Office, the short-term rental registration and inspection process is underway, and so far, 27 licenses have been issued to Camden property owners. Following that group of inspections, it was found that about three or four of the rental properties had issues that need to be brought up to compliance by next year, and there are currently 31 properties that are pending inspection or finalizing paperwork. And so far, three applications have been rejected for various reasons. So given the volume, that program's going very well. And 10 new construction permits were issued since the 1st of January. So with the harbor, the Army Corps of Engineers signed off on the final permit that we needed to begin work repairing steamboat landing boat launch, and both personnel from the harbor, as well as public works, have got to work replacing the planks. So that's, it's going to be a big project. They're replacing the planks at the boat launch, and it's bigger, heavier planks, so they should be more resilient to storms and a lot of the ongoing sort of damage that they were sustaining from storm events. It should be more durable to those events into the future, and also, there are going to be all-new floats out there, so that was part of the FY24 budget, so last year's budget, that's all been purchased and will be installed. So when that project's done, that area is going to be really nice and really usable for everybody who uses the public boat launch there. In regards to the Police Department, the paid parking on the public landing program will be in effect as of May 15th. The hourly rate is $3 an hour with a four-hour maximum, so those who receive citations for violating the rules will have 30 days to pay fines, and this will help those visiting from out of state and people on extended vacations to lessen the volume of late fees incurred. We'd like to welcome Christopher Therian to our Police Department. Chris worked for the Maine State Prison beginning in 2014 until he was hired full-time in Camden. He became a field training officer when he was at the prison and was promoted to corporal in 2022, and his duties there included criminal investigation, which in the fall of 2023, he began working as a reserve officer for the Searsport and Stockton Springs Police Department, and he obtained his Reserve Police Officer certification through the prison. So we're very happy to have Christopher on board and look forward to seeing him around town. He's very friendly, and I know he's going to be very enthusiastic about meeting everybody here. With Parks and Recreation, if any of you have passed by on Nolton Street at the skate park, you'll notice that a lot of the, or pretty much all of the elements have been removed, and it's, the skate parks can be closed for a while while the elements are repaired, and that lot is repaved. So Jeff met with a bunch of folks at 4:00 p.m. today to talk about plans for how the skate park will be fixed up. We've got a lot of great volunteers that are involved. They fundraised, so we have money to fix up some of the elements. They're also seeking additional donations. So we're hoping that when a master plan for the tannery property comes together, that eventually the skate park will be moved out to that location. And so anybody who is interested in helping put the old skate park back together, or any future planning for the tannery, reach out to Jeff, please. For the Public Works Department, there's going to be milling on Chestnut Street from Route 1 to Mid Street beginning on Thursday. We don't know exactly what time the milling machine is going to be there, so during that time will be, nobody will be able to park on Chestnut Street, and it will also be closed, so we're just asking everybody to plan around that. Unfortunately, we can't tell you an exact time, but it'll be a Thursday. Bay Road and Wilson Avenue are also going to be milled in the upcoming week, and we'll close the streets on those days and give everybody notice of this. So paving's going to occur later in the season when it's warmer. There was a kickoff meeting for the Malino Road sewer extension to Mountainside Park today, so that project is on track, and that's it for my updates.
I have a couple of questions. Back to the skate park for a quick moment. You're we're fix we're fixing the elements. Are we repaving there and then moving to the tannery?
So we're going to we're going to repave that lot and then talk is longer term, moving to the tannery.
So how far out is is that? Any idea?
I would say.
Not this year?
Oh, no, no. I'd say we're at least two, if not more years out from that.
Okay. And the other quick clarifying item on the license plate piece that you mentioned, the changes that you mentioned, is that only for folks who have a chickadee plate?
That's for that's for everybody who has. Yeah, it's a completely new coating, I guess. That was something with the scan like electronic scanning and certain. Yeah, like.
That's why they're forcing us all to get new license plates?
I believe so.
I was wondering about that.
So is there a website that does the main.gov have information on that if people are?
So the Secretary of State's office is where like the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and Vehicle Registration and License Plates. So I I would, I think there's been a whole thing anytime they change license plates or flags or anything like that, there's a big write up on it. So yes, I would. I'll I'll see if I can post something on the website about this because I'm I'm assuming that if you're asking questions about a lot of other people are too, because it'll affect everybody.
Right. So throughout the course of the year, everybody, everybody renews their license, their license plate. But this year, you throw out the old one and get a new one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did it online and they for I can see how that I was online doing it and it forced me through this process, which was probably better than having to like if I had gone into the town office and done it, I probably would have been really annoying. Like, what? Now I would have been asking all these questions and but I was in a hurry and I was doing it online. So I just agree, agree, agree. And then.
Because some people get really particular about even if it's not a vanity plate, they like the number.
You can pay $25 to keep your same number.
Right. And that's that's the important thing that people.
And I think.
Good for them to know about. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
And I think they still have, you know how Maine has like several novelty plates that, you know, raise funds for certain causes like there, you know, there's a lighthouse license plate and there's conservation license, like all of those will still be available. I believe those have to be reissued as a with the different coding.
Okay. Well, that answers the question.
Or whatever it is. I don't know. I might be wrong about it being a coding. It might be some but you know, it's something that scans better than what we have.
It's not us. It's a state decision. It's not nothing to do with.
It's not the town of Camden imposing a pine tree license plate instead of a chickadee.
Did you?
Yes. I'm very impressed, Chris. You're absolutely right. It's May 18.
I said the 19.
Oh, did you? Well, you know, I remember the 18. It's the 18th and it's, yep, and it's from nine until 12.
Are there any restrictions?
Oh, yes. There's actually, you could write a whole long thing about the things that people have tried to bring their like, you know, unexploded grenades and things like that. There are things that, you know, if you have a real doubt about something exploding or not, you shouldn't take it to the transfer station. But in in general, you know, the things that you can't throw away in your everyday.
So it's motor oil and radiator fluid?
Yeah, it's not the place for like dead animals or anything like that. It's the solvents.
So it is during the normal opening hours?
No. Sunday is a day that it's normally closed. So it'll be a half day open and then there'll be an additional one in the fall.
Okay. Good to know. Good to know. Super.
But don't bring your regular trash there. Yeah. So that's the big thing. Only the household hazardous waste.
Right. That's good to know. It's good to separate too. Anything, any other questions on the town manager's report? No, good. Moving on to action items, approval of license agreement for kayak racks at Barrett's Cove and Bog Bridge. And this is something that it might be good for people to have a little bit of a history of. So why are we talking about this now? And what happened?
So I actually can give the history on this. This is this happened just prior to me coming to town. But I do remember the background around it. So back in 2017, there the Parks and Rec Committee voted to incorporate kayak racks at a number of different locations in town where there was a real desire amongst folks with non-motorized boats to have a place to store them because they were often competing with with motorized boats to load in and load out and they were having difficulty finding parking and it's heavy to constantly transport, you know, load it up and transport. So anyway, there's a lot of interest in this. The problem was that the by the time this idea came to the select board, there the budget process had already moved forward and there was no funding to have the racks placed in the parks. So a couple of residents who were very motivated to move this forward came to the town and said, how about we supply the racks and to recover our cost, we'll operate. This is a business. We'll have a license agreement with the town where we'll manage the process of people who want to lease space. And so since 2017, Brian Robinson has been the person who's been managing all the racks that you see all over town. So we're at a point where we need to renew that agreement and Brian always was hopeful that the town would eventually buy him out and take over the management of the racks. So the agreement that you have in front of you looks at continuing that with that agreement with Brian and then buying him out at the end of the term. And then the town would take over management of the racks in the different locations in town.
Now, what's on the agenda just says the racks at Barrett's Cove and Bog Bridge. Is that what it's limited to? Or are there others?
Yes, there were racks, I believe, at Lake Beach at one point, and those were moved. And now there's like a different system there.
So this is only so.
You do the dinghy dock system for the if you buy a dinghy dock permit, you can use those.
So in a way, this is similar then to the the dinghy dock permit in that the town will take ownership of these devices and then much like the dinghy dock, get the revenue from from that instead of paying a private citizen who's otherwise doing business on Camden property.
Yep, that's the idea. And it would be managed through the Parks and Rec Department.
And so the Parks and Rec Department would pick up the whatever the revenue is.
Yes.
On this. And do we have an idea of what the annual revenue looks like?
Do you know, Jeff, off the top of your head? And does this obligate us to to do that or just give us the opportunity to buy out? You've had it. There's been an evolution in thinking about this clearly because, I mean, I supportive. I just remember some of the resistance before was, I think the phrase death by a thousand cuts was used, that the town just doesn't have the capacity to manage additional things. And people were coming in and saying, but I wanted this spot on the rack and this spot and just the sort of the management headache of it was too much, which was part of the other benefit of having a different entity. I assume that this isn't being forced upon you. This is embraced.
Yeah, question that I had, Audra. Do people tend to come to the town anyway to say, hey, that rack over there on Bog Bridge, are we already taking those questions kind of?
I would. Yes, we are. I would say that, you know, Brian's done or come on up. You're going to have to answer questions anyway. Brian's done a really good job heading a lot of that off over the years. And I think everybody's pretty accustomed to that system. And so, you know, it's it hasn't been something. There are years where it ebbs and flows. But in the past couple of years, there hasn't been a lot of inquiries that come to me anyway. Jeff might feel differently.
I know Jeff that and you have to say who you are so people can know.
Hi, Jeff Nathan, Director of Parks and Rec Town Camden.
Thank you. The the work the workload that's going to come along with this, I know that you wanted additional folks that you got like half of in the budget. How will taking this on affect you? And maybe the answer is it's not going to take it's not going to affect you this year. And then we'll go through the budget process next year, but without giving you the without leading the witness.
Thanks for the question, Chris. So so this year with Brian managing it, our our plan is is that Grace, the Assistant Parks and Rec Director and myself will learn the process from Brian. Grace will work closely with Brian this year on on how that process gets managed with the intent that we will have a very smooth transition next year. At some point, as we continue to develop the four season activities at the Ragged Mountain Recreation Area, somebody specifically responsible for programming and scheduling is likely at some point down the road in the future. At this point in time, however, I'm confident that between Grace and myself, we have the capacity to manage the process going forward. Yeah, as far as the revenue question, I don't have the exact numbers. I would estimate it at around $10,000 on an annual basis, based on the number of spots available, the the average price for those spots and the total number total number of racks. So I do think there's, you know, a good revenue opportunity while still providing this great service primarily to people, to town residents.
Are there other spots that maybe we should do the same thing?
I do think that's something we ought to consider. I've already had conversations with some town people in the town about potential of Shertail Point, actually, of having a rack or rack system over there. So while today I'm not prepared to say we're going to add more racks, I do think it's something we'll take a very close look at in the future.
Is there anything at Hosmer Pond?
There is not a rack per se at Hosmer Pond. You know, there's the the launch there, the rack, the excuse me, the boat launch that's available there, but there is no rack system there.
And that, I know this has been explained, but I'm just remembering people have asked me that the handicapped accessible float.
Yes.
Is not to is was damaged and isn't going to be repaired?
It was damaged. It is going to be repaired. I included funding for that in the Parks and Rec budget for next year. So provided that that gets passed, we will replace it, you know, as soon as we have the money to do so. We've already been in contact with the company that builds it and they know that our order is forthcoming.
Seems like it would make a lot of sense to have racks there too, because the difficulty of, you know, the benefit of having a handicapped accessible float without the ability to leave your boat there is.
There has been racks there in the in the past and canoes. I think the the YMCA program had their canoes.
Oh, right. But that was just for the YMCA, right?
I'm looking at the list from 2017 and they listed seven seven different places. Steamboat Landing, Camden Public, the Public Landing, Bog Bridge, Hosmer Pond, Lake Beach, Shertail and Barrett's Cove, some or all of which were at one time done.
Well, there was I was I was on the budget committee during that time and then watched the select board meeting where they discussed it. And there was significant pushback on some of it. For years, the select would actually every time it would come like, can we put kayaks at Lake Beach and leave them there? Multiple times, the select board discussed it, voted it down because of aesthetics or something. But I think what they ended up deciding was that the harbor was a separate thing. And so.
Yeah. So anything harbor related has got wrapped into the dinghy permit system.
Which is something that's happened recently. We've embraced that and.
So there has been a rack. There is a rack at Lake Beach. There has been a steamboat landing and the public landing. So are those not not for Parks and Rec? Those are for?
Managed through the harbor.
It wasn't. It's not on the public landing because of parking, but.
But what we're doing tonight is just restricted to the current two locations, even though the prior list of six or seven.
That never actually happened.
Yeah, that never happened. All that all that happened is part of, you know, this agreement with Brian.
Yep.
Were those two locations.
Okay. So that's because that's what we need to just focus on then tonight when we think about approving that agreement.
Yes. I move that we approve the oh. Oh, on the. Thank you. Does she still?
Yes. Ollie?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you that when the original agreement was made, they were there were the options to put them in those various places. And I believe that over time, it was it was learned that the demand was highest at the two locations that they ended up. And that's why they're there.
Okay.
Just going to add that to that.
Super. Thank you. But, you know, I think, again, the 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 motion, you were about to make a motion.
To, yes, I move that we approve the agreement as presented.
Does anyone from the town have any questions or comments about that who are here? No, no comments from them. Ken, do you have any questions?
Let's see, $8,000.
Maybe just a second for the purpose of discussion, you know, a move can.
Go ahead.
So I'm trying to skim down through the agreement, but but in December, the $8,000 will change hands and the racks become the town's and they become Jeff's essentially.
You got it.
Is that a fair price? I mean, 8,000 is not going to kill anybody, but I have no idea.
I looked into what it would take to replace racks. These are particularly nice racks. First of all, they're very well built. To replace them as those types of racks would would be four to five times that cost to replace them with a less expensive version of a commercial rack would probably be two to three times the the price. So, you know, receiving $2,000 this year from Brian and then paying $8,000 next year, I kind of look at as we're net, it's $6,000 we're paying for the six racks, $1,000 each. You know, if I look at this year's, what we'll receive and next year's, what we'll pay in order to do that. And I think $6,000 for the six racks ultimately as a net is an excellent deal for everybody involved.
Thank you.
So Allison's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, sure. Yes, I will second that.
It's so funny because you're making the same argument that they made before when even though the town was resisting, there was like, is this a really great deal for the town that and and so to hear that argument from you, I was, I don't know, I just, it's, I'm sure it would be enjoyable to certain people to hear you say that. So I'm glad everybody's happy, finally.
If there's no further discussion, are we ready for a vote?
Sure.
And voting on the motion made by Allison, it's 3-0 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The next item for us to vote on is the approval of the commercial fireworks policy. And Audra, would you mind just giving a couple minutes summary of what this policy?
So.
Depends and the.
We we put it as a policy on the agenda, but when we talked through that and Bill Kelly is is here and available, we we talked through how would we actually write a policy about this since the licensing authority for commercial fireworks rests with the State Fire Marshal's Office? The town's role in all of this is really event support. So it's less a policy and more a directive for how town resources are utilized in support of this event. So really, it's just us getting direction from the select board that will stand until there's a change made by a subsequent select board. So I guess just to give some background on the on this issue, when research was done regarding these types of fireworks shows, there's a lot of communities in Maine harbor communities where fireworks shows occur periodically throughout the year that struggle with this as well. So this is really not unique to Camden, which I think in this circumstance is pretty comforting. And the State Fire Marshal's Office also struggles to some extent with how to handle these types of shows. So really, you know, the the town has authority over consumer. So really, you know, the, the town has authority over consumer fireworks. So those are the fireworks that anybody can go, anybody over the age of 18 can go and purchase and shoot in communities that allow it. The town of Camden doesn't allow consumer fireworks to be launched in Camden. However, when it comes to commercial fireworks displays, that's completely licensed by the State Fire Marshal's Office. We had instances in prior years where the town wasn't informed that there was a commercial fireworks show. And so the fire department wasn't even staffed and ready for those shows. So that caused the Select Boards at the time to come up with a policy where it was required that anyone who had a permit from the State Fire Marshal's Office had to tell the town, or had to tell the fire chief at least two weeks in advance that there was going to be a show for the purpose of the fire department being able to prepare and have personnel available to cover that event. Apart from that, you know, this, this issue has come up periodically because, you know, the Select Board, as well as my office, as other offices in town, get a lot of complaints about folks who just would like the town not to have commercial fireworks shows for various different reasons. And the town provides a lot of support, particularly from the harbor master in, in service of having commercial fireworks displays. And, you know, instead of having private conversations in the background with different staff members about, we, we want you to do this, or we don't want you to do that. It's better that the Select Board talks about this as a group in terms of what's the expectation for our involvement in it? Would you like us to continue utilizing Steve's time to organize these shows? With the, you know, the event organizers who are putting them on, as well as the, the shooter and the company that's, you know, putting on the display? Or would you like us to be more hands off? And I think it's, it's just really important that we get that direction, because it's, it's really difficult to understand what the expectation is in terms of our involvement.
Okay. Thank you. We've seen, we have some people here as well. Maybe this is what people want to talk about some.
Couldn't, maybe we ask a little bit first.
Let's, let's see what the public has to say.
Okay.
We'll hear Ken's.
It's just that this wasn't ever aimed at, it was, the discussion was meant to come up before plans were made. It wasn't, it wasn't meant to be like a stopping a plan in motion kind of thing. It was meant to be a, let's talk about it ahead of time sort of thing. And so I think, just, well, when you just, so Eric knows that we're, you know, it wasn't like, ah, we got to stop them this year. It was, let's talk about this ahead of time and, you know, not meant to disrupt any current plans, so.
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a great precursor because I would, I would follow up my email on the Select Board in the town on May 19th, post the last discussion on May 18th, who you guys had. That followed a lot of conversations from papers and a lot of town.
I'm sorry, Eric, to interrupt you.
No, 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 no. I just think you hit the.
There you go. Thank you.
Do you want me to reiterate? Did everybody hear me?
Yeah, you can repeat what you said.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you because that, you know, that certainly answers questions that I had, that I had asked on May 19th, following the May 18th Select Board, which was followed by a lot of questions from town businesses, residents, to myself, only as the Chair of Campanary Business Group, as well as local papers, trying to get my, my feedback when I wasn't necessarily aware of that conversation at the time, but I did watch the YouTube video.
I find you handle that very nicely.
Just as a clarification, you said the May 18th and May 19th.
I had sent an email on May 19th.
Right, I.
For clarification on.
For clarification on the date, just to be sure.
Yes.
I suspect you mean April.
I'm sorry, March, sorry, March, March, March 18th and March 19th. That's, March 18th was when you guys began the conversations for this. So technically, as Allison's communicating now, is for a future growth policy for Camden, not necessarily anything that's in motion currently.
I mean, that's what I kind of wanted to be able to talk about it a little bit, us.
I understand, but let's, let's continue.
Before, because then they can tailor their input based on what they hear us say.
If I could just go on record as the Chair of the Campanary Business Group, that this group was not the organizing factor for policy procedures written in 2019. In fact, we stood in 2017, 2018 in favor with you to create policy to have events and other event committees come to the town to let you know it was occurring. I also said in my, in my letter to the Select Board that I don't believe that there's ample enough time to let the chief know. So that should be looked at again if this does continue. I think that he deserves a lot more as well as the town, and I said that back in 2018. So the policy as written that kind of, that showcases permit required standards and regulations, responsible party and litter control. This amendment would fall under the responsible party portion of that to allow not only the town, but the chief a lot more ample time. And I still think that we, we never really had that idea. Should just be coming to you in November of every year, for the year ahead, probably, if, if it was my, my suggestion. So I understand there's complaints and I'll just quickly answer that to, to Audrey's point. You know, there's complaints. I'm in the business of complaints and, and reviews, running three hotels in downtown Camden. But I will tell you that the positives far outweigh complaints. Complainers are going to be the ones that go online and send, set your reviews. And those are the ones that we are responding to the, to the world and making sure that we have comfortable practices for people to be welcomed back to Camden on. So, you know, while I understand we're going to get complaints, I do know that there's positive in things and there's people that are in favor that just don't necessarily speak up. I'm not here to orchestrate any pitchforks or fire to you guys. I've always come to you saying, let's just figure out organized method of doing this if it's going to continue. If the voice of Camden is that it's not firework friendly, then the voice of Camden isn't. If it is firework friendly, then there should be a, a structure to it and there's a better way of doing this. As of November of this past year, the Campanary Business Group did sign contracts with Central Maine Pyrotechnics and for the tune of a $14,000 fireworks show, powder show, which then required a 50% deposit to be placed, which is non-refundable. And we have been affected by tariff discussions and all that. We did not raise our budget. We just simply allowed that to be eaten out of our current budget. What does this mean for a show as is in first, in past years? Last year, as you, as you know, we struggled for the past four, four years since COVID, which I hope one day we don't say that word and have to compare it to 2020. But we did struggle with barge and floats. And then when we did find barges, we were either in different locations and we were the test mules, which didn't quite work out so well, but we were happy to, you know, to continue it on if we have, as we have. Last year's show was pulled off in a 30-day margin for raising funds and we did exceed that. So this year, we, we felt comfortable returning the show to as its previous years from public feedback. A, the show wasn't long enough. Two, it didn't, some people said it was the worst fireworks they'd seen. I mean, but you put it in perspective, I'm like, any firework to me is a great, you know, can be a great firework, but at the same time I have dogs and I usually am comforting them at home, not necessarily in the past 10 years, because I've been the orchestrating member of this show since it's fallen, by the wayside, from other groups. Campanary Business Group, this is one of our events that we've picked up, whether it was town-related, whether it was chamber-related, such as Christmas by the Sea. And then we helped in the past with Winterfest, which was then a town event, which then now is a library event. And it kind of works well again with toboggan festivals. So, but here today on behalf of the fireworks, you'll see every piece of paper is in organized fashion. The only thing that you don't have, which you won't in any of the towns in the state of Maine, is a permit from the State Fire Marshal currently. Those are issued in packets by Central Maine Pyro. And they do so in accordance with federal regulation as well as the state regulation. And they'll do it in packets by the month, which have gone out to the state. The fire marshals will, and maybe Chief can speak to this as well. They're not usually out until like two or three weeks prior to, and that's probably where that policy comes from, to let the chief know, because if the fire marshal has signed off on it, then we have this go-ahead. But that's where I say I think there's still discussion that can let the chief know as well as the town.
A quick question if I may. Then, so is the Campanary Business Group or who you're representing, are they proponents of both? Have a structured policy and B, keep the show on the road this year because of other pieces that are already in the works as we've done before? Is that what you're looking for?
Certainly. I would certainly hope that we could still be moving forward for this year as we've been planning for, but have always been a proponent of assisting the town with any sort of structure, whether it's grant work if needed and need a letter of support through the library as well for, for tree environments or for safe pathways. We do the same thing for these types of organized events. It was pretty un, well, shocking that there was events that occurred, especially with fireworks that were unannounced to the town before. So we don't do anything secretly. We're open, open to the public. So I do understand there's environmental impacts and I do want to just reiterate that Central Maine Pyro has stated, if, if people didn't know, they do know now because of Midcoast Village with their, with their quote stating how they've moved to paper and glue and they've had underwater as well as two-year research on, on their fallouts. And I do understand that we probably have other areas in the world to look at environmental stuff as well. And again, for the third year, well, actually now fourth year in a row, I do know there are other shows out there. And believe me, I've looked at them and I own drones. I'm a fellow at, you know, avid drone, drone person. Those shows will exceed any sort of budget that anybody in this town could prepare. An $8,000 show has been pretty easy to support in a 30-day mark timeframe. And a $14,000 show can, can occur. That's where we have been and there's no reason to go above and beyond. This provides about an 18-minute show, which we feel is kind of this happy medium. It's not too long and it's not too short. From what we've seen in the past years from people talking about shows and how it's, how it's produced as well versus the long leading crescendo show versus fire the shelves, get the show on the road, everybody celebrate 4th of July. And then lastly, what I'll say is, everybody's prepared to do this responsibly. If that means that we have to look at more volunteers from our standpoint, we'll, we have marine people standing by and ready to help. And there's lots of businesses that just say, tell us where to stand. So as far as this year, I'm hopeful that we can continue down this path. And if it's something that can continue in the town, I'm sure that those will be responsible parties. But we're happy to be part of that organizing of structure if needed.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comment? Yeah, please. And just to remember to state your name and town. Yes, thank you.
Well, I knew this would happen. My name is Peter. My name is Peter Rich and I live in Camden. And I apologize for my voice. I've been having trouble with it. The joke is that it has decided to go into puberty while I decide to go look for senior discounts. It's just awful, awful. Anyway, is, is this the time to discuss being a proponent of fireworks displays?
I'd, I'd like to hear public comment.
Okay. Well, I've written this, oh, thank you. Oh, sorry. I've written this lengthy thing I was going to read from my phone, but it doesn't seem appropriate to what we're talking about now. My comments were going to be that I think Camden should maintain the fireworks. I think we should actually make them better because it is good business for the town and it is fundamental to the 4th of July and the idea of patriotism and community. It's the perfect way to bring families together. Everybody watches the fireworks together and these people are in town and would do business with vendors and restaurants and other things. I think Camden has a reputation for being, you know, the best. We have the Opera House, we have the Chamber, we've got the best schools. We have hiking trails and all these things, the library especially. And I think that when people come to town for events like the fireworks, they're sort of reminded of that, especially people that don't come often. There's never a great time for a selectman's meeting when it comes to families. Because right now, the, the families are at home, the parents are getting the kids to bed or getting them to do their homework. But I guarantee you that we're a bunch of families here, a bunch of parents. They would be very pro-firework. It's what you do on the 4th of July. And I don't think that we should ever go back from that. Especially with the, the two anniversaries coming up for the country, 250 next year. Especially, that's a year to really shine and put our best foot forward. Maybe next year have a band at the amphitheater at the same time. But I think it's, it's unpatriotic not to have fireworks. They're an indispensable part of our, you know, heritage. And it's even referenced in the National Anthem with the bombs bursting in air and the red rockets, red glare. So you'll be glad I did not read what I had written down. And again, I apologize for my voice, but I just wanted to be on the positive end of this.
Thank you for your summary. Appreciate it.
And I thank you for listening to this.
Chief Farley, while we're talking about this and it really affects your line of work, can we have Chief Farley speak to what some of these policy elements are that affecting him?
Yes, certainly. I'm, I'm sure he'd be happy to. I think, I mean, I, I think, you know, his job remains the same sort of regardless because it is permitted by the state and they, if there's a commercial show, they need to be ready to, you know, assist if need be. I think where the conversation really lies is with the harbor master
Exactly.
and the level of assistance the harbor master provides. Because, because it's in the inner harbor, the harbor master has the authority to move any boat that's in Camden Harbor. And so the harbor masters use that authority to move boats out of the fall zone as well as procure and set up the float or the barge that the fireworks are launched from. So it, it's really about that resource as opposed to the fire department.
Okay, but the fire department is the one that gets the notification?
Fire department gets the notification. However, Steve is, I would say Eric would probably agree, he's integral to the show moving forward.
Yeah, it's, this conversation so far hasn't really centered on what the issues have, have been. So whenever you're ready to.
Well, we've got one more person from the public first.
Thank you very much for having an open discussion about this.
If you just.
My name is Stuart Smith and I'm a business owner in, in Camden. And I would really want to emphasize the value of the fireworks and the fireworks weekend to all of the commercial people in downtown Camden. It's one of the busiest, if not the busiest, weekend we would have the whole year. And the fireworks definitely bring people into the town. I realize it makes the town congested and it's very busy, but it is truthfully, if you talk to any merchant, any restaurant person, it is definitely the best and busiest weekend, much better than Christmas, of the whole year. And it's a very important piece to, to support the merchants and the restaurant owners and the people that live in the town who really like to see the fireworks. I'm thinking of Allison and her past sister, who was a very good friend of ours. And I used to have to take the kids down to Thomaston because there were no fireworks in Camden. And going down to Thomaston was a real pain in the a. And to get in and out of Thomaston to watch the fireworks with all these young kids that wanted to go down to see the fireworks, I was so excited when we finally got fireworks in Camden and the kids can enjoy it here. And it's, it's fantastic to be at the Harbor Park and see 2,000 people in blankets enjoying a great night and it's just a fantastic thing. And I think probably Steve's biggest problem with the fireworks. And I think probably Steve's biggest problem with the fireworks is he's got to get back in time to start dancing when the band picks up at the public landing. So I think he enjoys the.
Oh, Steve has no problem with the fireworks. Nobody's alleging that.
It's, it's truly a great thing for the town of Camden. Now, I know, you know, like my son, his dog can't stand fireworks and they live on C Street and I gotta make sure the dog's inside. And so lots of people do have problems with it for sure, but you have to look at the number of people that benefit from it. And, you know, I think about the fireworks and the fire department and probably one of the more exciting fireworks show was the Millennium when we celebrated 2000. And the fire department was, had all the fire trucks down at the public landing and they were shooting fireworks off of Mount Batty. And all of a sudden they had a fire going on the side of Mount Batty and all the fire, fire guys were trying to get out of the public landing with their fire trucks and they had the sirens going. Nobody would move, they all thought we were just celebrating the fireworks. It was pretty wild, so, but it's really.
You're supposed to be pro-fireworks, Steve. Come on, you're getting.
So that was quite an interesting, interesting evening, but, you know, the fireworks are just a great thing to have going on in the middle of the summertime and it brings a lot of people to town. And, you know, when you've got merchants that are trying to make money to pay their bills, it makes a huge difference having something going on. And I think that's a real important piece to think about when you're talking about what is the value of the, of the fireworks and that whole weekend. It's great, so just something to keep in mind. But thank you very much.
One last thing, yes, sure.
Just want to go on record for you.
Yep.
I just want to go on record to reiterate what Audra said in the past. There is no town involvement as far as the procurement of the show. And I've been asked many times by either residents or commercial businesses, what does the town put up for the fireworks? And the answer is zero and there should not be an answer above that. In my book personally, that there is no town that I am aware of that puts money towards a fireworks show. This town is 100% raised by residents and commercial businesses in town of Camden. So I do want to reiterate that because I know that comes to the town as well as the budget committee and that, that speaks in my 25 years of hospitality from Maine to Florida. So there is no money from towns. Let me reiterate, that goes into a fireworks show.
Thank you. Allison.
First of all, I think the way that you have answered questions, Eric, from many different sources with many different opinions, including even the last newspaper article when you're cut a card, you do such a great job. I know it's, it's really hard not to be, you know, snarky or annoyed, whether it be at the town or at residents, or I just think you've done a really great job and I was sympathizing with some of you last time after knowing how hard you worked to put on that show and then to see some criticism. I normally don't get out there and personally defend the fireworks, but I was feeling like I, I wanted to with how great your responses were. I think, I think we can argue until the cows come home about who likes fireworks and who doesn't, and I don't want to do that tonight. I think mostly is that just since I've been on, on the select board, I have seen this take up an inordinate amount of time independently of Steve and all of that, but just talking in the background, complaints to Audra, questions, differences of opinion on the select board about whether the town should just go ahead and make things happen without talking to the select board, whether the change of a barge location or a launch location from the historical place, whether that is a select board item or not, whose responsibility to notify residents. And invariably, the select board will end up having different opinions about it and residents will. And you can sometimes make the argument one way or the other, oh, well, this should go to the select board for approval or, or it shouldn't. Sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, an attorney can argue things one way or the other. And I've seen it put town staff in a really difficult position year after year, kind of fighting this sort of background conversation, which I, I used to very easily be able to say, oh, well, it's not a town thing, you know, because that's, that easily ends the conversation sometimes, it's put on by a private entity, end of story. I agree with Eric that it's been the last few years as it's become increasingly difficult sometimes to find a, a barge, whether they're working on construction projects or, you know, all kinds of things. And last year, for instance, you know, we all were told it wasn't going to happen and that was from the Camden Area Business Group just telling us it wasn't going to happen last year, not because anybody said no, but because the logistics of finding, I believe, the barge to launch from made it so even though they raised the money to do it, there was just no way of doing it. And so it was like, well, okay, that's what's going to happen. It's, it made the conversation quite easy. And then from my understanding, the, I think it's sort of the last minute heroics of the harbor master and others to find, and, you know, here's a picture, you know, that's to find floats or whatever, something, anything to launch fireworks off of. And so after having told everybody that it wasn't going to happen and then to be out there and see, you know, four, or I don't know how many that was, rickety floats kind of rafted together, you know, it looks like something out of Castaway a little bit. It wasn't what I was expecting. And some, it, it happens where boat owners get, and, and you'll see eventually when you're on the select board for long enough, you'll find out things that people will say, I was, Steve Pixley just called me and said, I have, I can move my boat if I want to for the fireworks, but I don't have to. And then people are like, is it going to get hit by, you know, is it going to catch on fire? Is it not the others, you know, Curtis Island for, for years, the caretakers out there have said, there, you know, there have been a couple of times where small fires have started, but nobody wanted to complain because they didn't want to be perceived as anti-fireworks. There is a lot more that goes into it. And I think that there's, there should be standards for how it happens and that it shouldn't, it should be agreed on ahead of time. And I've seen Eric actually for years try to get this on the agenda earlier in the year. And I've seen, you know, different select board chairs say, actually, no, this doesn't need to come to the select board, or it, you know, it does, or it's just been, I think there should be a process with clear standards. I personally think we've moved beyond fireworks and we could do something better and that people would still come to Camden. But, but aside from that, I, I just, I don't like the last minute raft a bunch of floats together. And, and, and then seeing the communication that we got from somebody, I don't know who sent the article, but I, I didn't realize that it was a possibility to have, you know, unexploded fireworks washing up on beaches and for that to be, you know, Central Maine Pyrotechnics was fined for it or they, in, in another state, they had an issue when we, you know, we, somebody sent us an article where they, it was very clear that they had violated standards, you shouldn't be allowing them to get away. It was taken very, very seriously in another state. They took away somebody's license for five years in that state and, and so that, that, that's a whole nother set of.
Yes, but what we're talking about tonight is the fireworks policy that's the memo that we have.
Well, I would like to make sure that there are things in the policy that reflects the actual risks. We, we got a very thoughtful memo from the Conservation Commission.
Is that part of, I didn't see that as part of the packet.
It doesn't appear to be part of the packet. We're all individuals, it was, it was the last time fireworks were on the agenda. It can be hard to, like, like Eric missed it the last time the fireworks were on the agenda, but the Conservation Commission noticed. It's very, very hard to follow along with all of this stuff and for everybody who wants to, has an opinion to share, for them to notice at the exact right time that it's on the select board agenda. So I don't know what the proper standards are for deploying fireworks. It seemed that in some other states, certain things that they did violated that. Is it more loosey goosey in Maine?
Do you need 30 more seconds or are you good?
I yield to you for the, now.
Ken, do you have any comments?
Thanks. I'm, I'm not sure what we're, what the format of our discussion, whether we're going to vote on anything or whether Audra is just looking for a generalized feeling of support or in one direction or, or another. But I think there is community support and, and the, the emphasis on community, these big events, Fourth of July and Labor Day, that is Winter Weekend, these are, these are community events that require volunteers and if the town can support community volunteer events that draw people to town, that's a very positive thing. So I would be in favor of, because of the community sense, the tradition, the volunteers, it's only two times a year. These are all positive things that I see in, in supporting fireworks in town. I have a question that I haven't heard come up, but, but, but safety, we do hire professionals to fire off these fireworks and put it offshore. There is no danger to volunteers or civilians. And yet if it, if it became known that we weren't going to have commercial fireworks, I'm afraid people would go out and buy their own because if I go out on a, on a July night, I hear fireworks all over the place on Hosmer Pond and I hear lots of, oh, homemade fireworks displays. And that to me is scary. Fireworks do, do scare me, firecrackers, fireworks, sparklers, as a parent, they, they drive me crazy. So I'm delighted to have a professional paid organization out there on the water doing a town celebration in the form of fireworks. That's, that's my general direction of what I'm thinking. I don't know how that takes, what, what form our decision-making is going to take tonight, Chris.
Okay. Now, Jeremy also provided a document for the packet concerning this and he's online. Is it, I, able to talk about the, you know, summary of the commercial fireworks policy that?
Jeremy didn't write it from 2019.
Oh, this is 2019 Jeremy Martin, it says it's from.
Oh, yeah, Jeremy wrote that one in 2019.
Yeah, I was here for that too.
Yep.
And that was, we were going to regulate the placement of barges was the.
Yes.
Approach there.
I didn't know if Jeremy could provide a little context on that if he remembers.
I mean, we all, I was here, Jeremy was here, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I don't, are you there? Hold on, let me, let me just get to it.
Yep.
I can, I can, I can answer questions.
If you can summarize it, yeah.
So at the time, this, this same thing came up again and this was really precipitated by not the Camden Area Business Group's show, there was another show where the town wasn't informed. And so the concern around that prompted looking at, you know, informing the chief. The town had to approve the placement of the barge, I believe the directive was that would come from the select board. And it referenced also, you know, what was required of them in the state fire marshal's office at the time as well. The town had passed a clean communities ordinance, I believe is what it was called. It's now wrapped into the code, but there were a lot of issues prior to that with litter associated with the shows. So it was also pretty strict requirements, both directly after the show as well as the day after the show, that the organizer or the, the commercial fireworks, sorry, I forgot the terminology, whoever the shooter is, had to go and clean up any litter, both on the, the night of the event as well as the next day.
So, so with this letter that you wrote in, in 2019, you're trying to put some structure, I guess, around what we're going to do, including this is fallout area with Curtis Island and litter control, like you mentioned. The additions that, that you're seeking as far as guidance then is how much of town resources do we want to continue to support this? And I think with other things, and I think Jeremy has usually is big, is in on the fee structures of items two.
We, we can't levy any fees for anything like this because it's.
We cannot.
No, because the license goes through the state. We're not, this is just an administrative policy about what you expect in terms of, you know, notice and it, it's really, it's really more, you need to look at as this is being put on by an external organization, however, they need logistical support from the town. They also want town support, like Eric was saying. So they want this to be a partnership with the town. So if this is to continue, what are the things that we're saying we expect of them to continue partnering with them?
Okay, good, thank you. Like, one of the things that Eric had also brought up was, you know, notice to, you know, the fire department to give them plenty, plenty of notice. I mean, would we not also want to, in this, like this case, where we're doing it on the water, also notification to the harbor master? You know, why would the fire department only be singled out in that notification process?
Well, because it's.
He's going, he's the one diving down and placing the floats. I mean, he's like doing it.
Like, that's Mike, that's the nature of my question. I'm saying, why is it just the fire department that receives notification? What's the reason for that?
So, like I said, you know, when that other event happened that the town wasn't informed about, Steve knew about it because he is intimately involved with any show that happens in the inner harbor because he is the only person in town with authorization to move boats out of the fall zone. And, you know, he frequently does that or asks people to move. And, and he also has always been pretty integral in securing the barge or placing the barge or moving the barge. He's.
Not a barge.
Sorry, floats, floats. It hasn't been a barge lately. He, he dives and secures them, like he puts on a dive equipment or has before and secures them. So Steve always knows about it because they rely on Steve for that support to put on the show, whereas with the fire department, I guess they just didn't even think to, or the fire marshal was supposed to inform the fire department. I guess that's supposed to be the process and it didn't happen that year for whatever reason. So that's why that was a specific requirement because Steve always knows because he's in the thick of it, whereas the folks who have to be ready to put out a fire should it happen, unfortunately, didn't know about it that night.
And then Curtis Island, a lot of the time they have to stomp out embers.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had people come really upset about Curtis Island almost catching on fire. It all seems like a just easy thing until.
Yeah, I think that's our, was our frustration at the time. Eric's always been very communicative and, and lets us know what's going on. Our frustration, I think, is with the fire marshal's office, built with fireworks as well as doing business inspections. We have the same education level that their inspectors have, they never let us know when they're coming to do inspections, even though I've asked and asked and asked. With this fireworks show, we, we didn't know.
And I guess it's, you know, it's almost a little bit of a moot point when it comes to the July 4th show because it's usually well-publicized, everybody knows about it. You know, it's really if there's a random event where they're going to put on a fireworks show and, and it doesn't have that level of publicity to it.
Yeah, and, and many people think that because it's fireworks, that we are somehow either sponsoring it or have something to do with it, we get multiple calls. And when they, when we, when it's not publicized, we get multiple calls. Calls of people, you know, concerned about their dogs being scared and running off and, or, you know, why weren't you here when you're usually here? So we just, you know, it's, it's best to have us know and we're always talking with, with Pixley when it happens, we're always talking with Chief Gagnon when it happens. So they all get notified as well.
If it would come to the select board with a, a more notice and with all of the, it's a. If it would come to the select board with a more notice and with all of the, it's a lot of it is, even though I don't personally really care for the fireworks that much, I think what Eric is saying is really what needs to happen is that it needs to come with a lot of notice, with all the details. Because sometimes they decide they might want to do it from a different spot and, and, and then if you, if it comes to the select board, the select board talks about all these details and then approves it as explained, based on whatever changing situation there might be. And we can talk about how much staff time it may or may not take and if this change is okay. And then everybody from the public too, has a chance to weigh in and say, oh, I don't really like the idea of it being launched from over there. I like it from being over here. And then everybody gets to make a decision and then you move forward with that decision rather than town staff, you know, having to react and kind of make judgment calls all the time. I just think if we, like any other event that comes to us, when we look at the questions we asked about the sidewalk sale, it would be reasonable to just have that come and.
But that doesn't happen now. There's no requirement for that now?
It's not really, yeah, I guess that's basically what I'm saying. That's the frustration is that it's, because then you think it's, well, it's not really going to happen anyway, but then an opportunity arises and then it's up to whoever the select board should to decide whether that comes to the select board or not. That's the kind of stuff that's taking us a lot of energy talking about that.
And I just want to emphasize again, we have, we have no statutory authority over this. It's all with the state and that's why it's so, and like I said, this happens in every harbor front community in Maine where they have fireworks shows. They grapple with, if the, if the town's not putting it on and they don't have any level of authority or control over what's happening, what is our role in it? Because the community, people in the community automatically expect that the town is going to be involved and that if they have issues, if they have questions, that they can come to the town and get their question answered. And a lot of times we just can't because we don't really have a defined place within it. It's all very ad hoc, our, our involvement.
Okay, so. Okay, Eric, you have to speak unfortunately at the, at the podium.
It should also be known that it's not just state fire marshal, it's U.S. Coast Guard and that permit also has to go when it's waterway. So that's a, that's a whole nother segmented line of approvals.
So for, for you in running the program, the being the program manager of this in a way, when would you have needed to have a decision by a select board to say it's a go or a no-go in 2025 or '26?
Yeah, if you wanted me to make a suggestion, and this is personally myself, I'm sure I would have support of the, a few board members that are here. If you wanted to say every November, the pre, the priority, the post-year or the year coming had to be approval for all firework events, I don't see why that couldn't be a requirement in this process. You know, we are fortunate that we're not like other harbor towns. I know Audrey mentions other harbor towns that just will have fireworks, like because someone's getting married or something and they're just like, I've been in other harbor towns and all of a sudden people are turning and they're like, hey, we didn't even know fireworks were happening tonight. And it's because somebody got married or somebody won the lottery or something like that. But I would, I would certainly stand here today and say, you have every bit of the right to say, in our formal process, as a town, we should be able to say, commercial fireworks should be approved in the November meeting or the select board meeting every year, but maybe I'm wrong. But I would see that that would be a lot better because then we all know when we're coming to you. Us as Camden Area Business Group, Windjammer, if Lyman Morris is doing anything for Camden Classic Cup or anything in, as it involves, then you know what's on the docket. It's prior to your budget committee meetings as far as staff-related budgeting, budgeting or anything like that as well. But just due process is definitely worth.
Yep. Now, so with the Camden Area Business Group, and even can we do it? Can we say, great, we're going to have use of town resources to do this, but it is overtime or whatever. Is there budget for overtime if we can do that? I don't know if we, if we can, what the legal limit is.
I mean, you can say that, yes, we can do it, but each event costs this much to the town. You're saying you can't impose fees, which is interesting. I think you could.
Maybe, I don't know what you want to call them, but.
Right, I know. But I think that, yeah.
I think maybe we can sometimes charge like police time or whatever.
Is there, is there, I mean, when other events happen, you know, wouldn't there be the ability to understand what the overtime impact is?
You know, this has been such a, you know, just a thing that everybody's takes for granted that we support. So it's not like there's any like special duty charge with the police department or anything else. It's, it's really just kind of been how, like very informal and everybody's sort of agreed to it over the years and we've kept, you know, rolling with it.
But if we could say ahead of time, okay, it's the barge is going to be here. It has to be a barge. We're not going to use the floats that we determined were unsafe for public use for some other reason, say, oh, you know, we've got these and we can pull them over here and, and some, then, I don't know where the, where the floats came from that we use, but your, do you, is that, is there like designated?
Last year, as with some other years, Windjammer's also used Tibbetts Marine. So it's got to be a certain square footage for this show to even go off. There's a requirement from Central Maine Pirate.
It just looked really.
No, it's interesting.
It didn't look.
Even the year that we got tucked into Sherman's Cove, that was a barge that came, looked like we should have been in Portland. And that took a lobster boat with a tall deck to be able to get even onto the barge and pass the fireworks up. So that thing was way larger than it needed to be, but that's what Prock Marine at that time had to send over.
Right. So we've seen the full like gamut.
Two questions online. Holly had her hand up first.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that when I spoke with the fire marshal, and as Audrey said, he said that, you know, towns up and down the coast of harbors deal with fireworks issues exactly like we're dealing with. And according to him, we can absolutely as a town put, you know, set up a fee for services. There's no, there's no, it doesn't affect the license at all. It's just a responsibility of the sponsor or organizer to do the things that are necessary to make the permit, to, to abide by the permit. And what, and a couple of those things are that you have a certain, you know, hundred, whatever the hundreds of feet are of the fallout zone has to be clear. And whether that is a service that the town charges for or that the sponsor finds someone private to do it can go either way. And that's, that's from the fire marshal. I just want to clarify that.
Okay. And Jeremy had his hand up too. You're on mute, Jeremy.
Yeah, just agree with Holly's point there, but I just wanted to say that the size of the float and all of this stuff is regulated by NFPA 1123. So, you know, when they, when you say that there's this large float that came in, Sherman's Cove, that came in for a reason, it's sized for a reason and they have requirements. So I just wanted to share that in the fallout zone, all that stuff is in 1123 of the NFPA, which is why included in that policy and they're required to comply with that stuff. So they have to work with the fire department in order to make sure these things work out.
So just, I mean, I can't imagine, both of those things can't be true, that the, that the large barge or float in Sherman's Cove was required to be that large because of the NFP whatever, but then also the sort of castaway raft system that we used last year was also okay. I mean, maybe there are standards and we could just make sure that they're followed.
It's a minimum square foot.
What is, do you know what that is?
Eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty, off the top of my head.
Just anything that floats or.
Yeah, maybe.
Specific standard for displays that are launched off of floats.
And if this all came to the select board every year and we could say, you know, for any fireworks display that requires town support, it needs to come, you know, according to some schedule. And then every resident that wants to talk about it can do it then, rather than us all after the fact playing this game of trying to figure things out. It would just be better.
Steve, you on one more thing?
I just want to make one comment. You know, you're talking about the flimsy floats. That when the NFPA comes over and the fireworks are transferred down to the dock, they are right there and nobody can touch those fireworks except for the licensed people that are putting them on the dock and they're working with NFPA. So like in Rockport, when I do it, when they have the New Year's Eve one, Taylor Allen and other people that are very involved in the whole thing, they can't touch any of the fireworks and the, and the NFPA agent is right there and sees what, where they're going to be set up, authorizes how they're set up. So I don't think it's quite fair to be saying you had some flimsy floats going out there. Because if that was the case, they never would have let the fireworks take place. Because they're there to oversee the whole thing and they are not going to, that's, that's fine.
I mean, I just like, it would just.
Allison, but I'm, all I'm telling you is that this is not Steve Pixley just putting up a bunch of fireworks. Okay, that's all regulated by the state and they're there licensed.
The state comes out and.
Absolutely. They are right there at the dock. Nobody touches the fireworks except a licensed fireworks person.
I know, but Central Maine Pirate Texas in 2023 was found to be in violation of a bunch of these.
Lots of people are found in violations of things, Allison.
Are, are you objecting to talking about this ahead of time and approving it before? I mean, I think what I'm, what I'm saying should happen is actually in total agreement with what Eric is saying.
I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think it's.
It's hard to answer all these questions.
Fair to say that this is a flimsy operation. Okay, that's not right. Because you have someone from the state authorizing it, they are overseeing the whole thing and they know what they're doing.
Thank, thank you.
I just wonder how they keep things from rolling off or Curtis Island from catching on fire and.
That's what the NFPA is all about. And they're going to do a lot better than the select board is going to do it.
Thank you.
Well, so there is, most years there is an investigator from the fire marshal's office that comes and physically inspects the shoot location, make sure it's clear and puts their eyes on it. So that's just one thing. That investigator typically calls me unless we know they're coming and we go and take a look at it together. And I would tend to agree with Ken that if we didn't have commercial shoots, we would have more consumer shoots and then we have more injuries. As far as Curtis Island, the last fireworks shoot, I had multiple phone calls with folks interested in Curtis Island and I tell them the process we go through. We monitor the Maine Forest Service wildfire danger and folks often say, well, how do they determine? Their, their remote weather station is the Hope Corner Fire Station. They're looking at that every day, every morning. So that's pretty accurate in terms of what our weather conditions are. I have in the past been, when I've been concerned about Curtis Island, had Steve take me out and physically walked around the island before saying yes to the fireworks. Ironically, some of those same folks who didn't want fireworks last year were pestering Audrey and I for burn permits this spring for burn permits on Curtis Island. We didn't let it happen.
Okay, so great.
I would, also, I think it's important to add.
The layers.
There have been, there have been occasions, I don't remember what year it was, where shows were called off because of weather conditions.
Right.
Where the, you know, where the shoot location was and where the winds were coming from, so.
And there have been times when Curtis Island caught on fire in the last seven years.
And there were times when Curtis Island caught on fire. I'm trying to be balanced.
There's a lot of balance to be had. If we just talk about it ahead of time, then we won't have to argue about who did right, you know, what, right or wrong after the fact.
If we can go back to the agenda item, which is approval of a commercial fireworks policy, I've got a question directed to that, if you don't mind, which is, I don't see the commercial fireworks policy as part of the agenda.
I think I explained that at the beginning because it's more of a directive from the select board. We just need to know, the things that we end up arguing about are, why is Steve Pixley spending so much time doing this? Why, like, why did, why did you, like, why did you allow this? Why is, you know, why is the barge located here? Why isn't the barge located there? Why didn't you have somebody at Dillingham Point? Why didn't you have somebody at Curtis Island?
Okay.
So it's, it's really just a directive from the select board as to how, what level of support do you want to provide to these shows? Also, police details, all the discussions that we've had about fees and charging. Do you want us to continue on as we have and we provide all the in-kind support that's necessary to support the show? Do you want us to, you know, do you want this to come in front of you for discussion and approval ahead of time? How far ahead of time would you like that to happen? All those sorts of things.
I think all of those things that you mentioned, you know, correspond with what Eric was also bringing up earlier in that it is, for this year, my thought is, you know, go as we have because we're so late in the game. However, I think it would be appropriate if we could somehow put a document together to expand on the one that we had to speak to specific schedules. I'd like to see if we could research about if there's a way for fee, you know, if there, if we were doing a big concert, we would, you know, do we expect the town employees to go out after the concert to pick things up or is it the person organizing the concert? You know, why is it any different for any other event that might draw people? I like the idea of, you know, schedule to let people know as well as businesses know with enough time that they need to make changes if we're not going to do something. Would it be possible to pull together some sort of a document between now and September that would lay out those different pieces and we vote on that? Is that possible?
However you want to do it.
I feel like they have a lot to do and that assigning the research, putting, you can kind of see a little bit what happens to policies or directives or whatever, the 2019 situation that we were made aware of is maybe a good example. I don't think we're, we're prepared to do all this right now. And I would prefer not to assign town, like put the burden on town staff. But maybe table it for, also, there are only three of us here and the most, the, the person who had the most to say about this isn't here. And so it's better, it's a better conversation to have with a full select board. Overall, I do think a lot of this could be solved by having it come to the select board in advance with some amount, you know, that the select board, until we come up with something more advanced, that the select board will just approve or not commercial fireworks displays that require town support. But that.
So you would.
I don't want them to do a research project, I guess.
I'm trying to summarize what you were saying to understand it. Are you saying that you would prefer to have a document that states the structure? Yes or no?
If one can be developed from an outside entity that doesn't.
So you don't want to have someone who is a town employee come up with the bullet points of what would be the structure? Is that what you're saying?
No, because I think ultimately it's, it's a moving target of public opinion and that the real things that make a difference one way or the other don't come down to very easily to clear standards that we can set ahead of time. But that it's, it's just a notice to the community, a group wants to put on an event and that people need an opportunity to be able to say, oh, the barge is here, just like we put anything on an agenda. So I don't think that we're going to hit the nail totally on the head by.
My, my question is, are there elements that you could see that we would put in a standard to say, if you're going to have commercial fireworks, this is the basic structure? That it'll be decided upon, that it will go to the select board, that here's the schedule and this is what we're going to do concerning town resources? And if there's a recommendation on barge location, that that'd be part of the standard? Are you saying that we should not do that?
I think we tried to do that in 2019 and didn't really solve anything because things kept not coming to the select board. I think we let them, they, they do their thing this year. They raised a bunch of money. They, they do it to the best of their abilities with, then, you know, the reasonable amount of town support that has been provided in the past. For this one, any additional fireworks display, is there Windjammer Weekend? Or is there enough time for that to come to us at least, you know, a month ahead of time? So we can talk about that and.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that's, that's the issue is what's the time? time? And so that's why I would be a proponent of saying, there's a schedule that we'll do, if it's November, if it's October, whatever it is, for the subsequent year, so to allow businesses time to plan. I think that would be more effective and a more proponent for the business units, as compared with 30 days prior. I don't think that's enough time. So I would like to add-
As long as you're prepared to say no to all the things that come up that seem reasonable, and like you want to be responsive.
Excuse me, I wasn't finished yet.
Okay, sorry.
I would be a proponent of coming up with some basic guidelines, that even if it means that we work with specifically Eric, to say, hey, Eric, would you like to sit down with us to determine what these things are? Who, who are the, the small little committee to just knock it out? These are the basic pieces to protect both the staff, the time, and the business intent, as well as what people would like to see in town.
Oh yeah, do you want to be, I think you and Eric, you and Eric being on a committee, and I have no objection-
Would you?
To that, I, that sounds great.
I would be a proponent. What do you think, Ken?
But I just, not a lot of town staff time.
What, what do you think, Ken?
Thanks, that's a, you've got to have a framework, and the framework, as, as Eric suggested, having an annual review or call it an application, that sounds a little formal, but, but there's got to be some kind of communication. And if that's in October or November and layout for the subsequent year, it sounds like planning has to take place that far ahead, so why not? And as far as this year, if you're looking for this year, I, I don't know how this body right now says you're, you're good for July and Labor Day, but that's what you're looking for. And I think that we, we need to somehow express that tonight for you.
Hold on, what do you mean Labor Day?
So if we wanted to go ahead, yeah, when you're working, if we wanted to go ahead and draft something that provides that, could we also have input from Jeremy, who's had this in the past, as well as Steve Pixley? If, just, just to be brief-
I would, I'd say Jeremy doesn't need to be involved.
Okay.
This isn't his area. I'd say the, it's really the fire chief-
Yep.
And the harbor master.
Okay.
Probably also, you know, Randy, to just have some idea of what the police-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, would the select board be supportive of me at least doing a first cut with Eric? And then we can bring something to the, try to hit the marks that we believe that they would like for the chief and the harbor master in Randy? And that way, it's easier for something to edit. I just wouldn't want to put something in there as an idea of the standard that was in violation of the Fire Marshal's Office that I'm just unaware of. But we want to make this so it's, things can happen, and give the structure to allow it. That's all.
I'd, I'd say the fire chief can provide you with the guidance you need for that.
Okay. I, I wouldn't, I just wouldn't want to do something outside of that inadvertently.
And also, you know, in doing research around this, Holly spoke with the, the Fire Marshal, and they're very helpful and willing to answer questions.
Um-
Well, that's something-
Guard.
One thing that would be great to add to that, I think, is kind of a basic write-up of what it takes to put on the show. What are the, what are the pieces? Just kind of who's involved and what happens. And Eric is going to know that-
Yep.
Better than anybody, but-
Okay. Well, do we need to, given this is an action item for approval of a commercial fireworks policy, it seems like that approval of a commercial fireworks policy, as it's written there, that piece is tabled, in a way.
I'd say so.
I think it's fair.
Yeah, I'm not ready.
Fair to say that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have to vote that it's tabled?
I move to table the approval of the commercial fireworks policy until we can review more information from the ad hoc committee.
Second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thanks for volunteering.
And a vote? Awesome. Look forward to working with you, Eric.
So Audrey, you have what you need for this season.
Yes, we're just going to continue as, as usual.
Which doesn't, well, I wasn't, don't think we're voting on-
There's, I mean-
There's a point when you've just-
Let's not play this game, because I need, I need clarity around this. I can't play the same game that we're playing.
Don't break any laws, as long as you don't break any laws. Like-
We won't break any laws.
You know, some, some things are more important than fireworks. Like, at some point, you have to pull, I mean, even Eric knows, you know, sometimes he's like, we're going to have to pull the plug this year, because we can't get this or this lined up. And Eric is going to be in charge of knowing, since he knows so much about it, and he's the Campanary Business Group representative, he decides if the, you know, things can happen responsibly. That actually, just hearing that sounds, makes me feel better.
But I'm going to say this out loud.
Yes.
The police are going to provide police presence, as they normally do.
Oh yeah.
The fire department will be there, ready with personnel to respond if need be, and Steve Pixley is going to do a Steve Pixley thing, which is a lot of support to, a lot of logistical support to make the show happen, just so everybody's clear.
I don't want to vote yes on that.
I'm, you don't need to vote. This is just how it's always gone, and it's going to continue this way, and everybody's going to expect that it's going to continue as it has in the past.
Well, I, I, I hear your concern, but I think we can, there are ideas that I have that we, maybe we can discuss on, on how to address some of this. I think working together with the Campanary Business Group will be a good thing. And I don't have a lot on my plate right now, so there's one thing I need to finish with Randy, the Chief of Police, but hopefully that's for the next meeting.
Yes.
And then-
Yes, Eric's-
You've got to move on.
Eric's offer of volunteers is very welcome.
Yeah. So with that, can we move on to the last item on the agenda prior to adjournment? And the executive session is the approval to pursue legal action for Gian?
John.
John? Sorry, John. Violation of chapters 15, Article 3. Would you like to describe what, the summary of that, or would you like Chief Farley to?
So I can, I can just give you a summary of the whole issue, and Bill Kelly and Chief Farley can fill in any of the gaps. So I believe everybody is aware of the 11 Chestnut Hill rodent infestation. It's come before this board before. There was, you know, discussion of consent agreement. There was compliance from the property owner at the time to remediate some of the issues that were leading to the infestation. A lot of that centered around the feeding of birds. And so, you know, a lot of steps were taken to remove sources of food that, that were, that was causing it. Also, removing habitat on the property, repairing some structural issues with the property. There were also creating additional habitat. So that, that issue was remediated. As part of the effort of the property owner to remediate that issue, they moved the location on the property where they were feeding birds to an area that was sort of very in close, in close proximity to the boundary with another neighbor. And just large flocks of seagulls, murders of crows, large volume of birds that were being fed from that location. And so we were informed by the neighbors of it. And we've tried to work with the property owner again on a number of instances to get him to sign another consent agreement about the feeding of the birds, as well as addressing the rodent infestation issue and some of the remediation around that in a more long-term manner, so that it doesn't have to be this constant sort of back and forth between the property owner and the town. It's, it's just sort of an ongoing consent agreement, where, you know, the, they're agreeing to, you know, certain actions that are going to prevent, you know, further infestation, and also the, the large volume of wild animals, or birds specifically, that are on the property. So the, the fire chief has put a lot of effort into contacting the property owner and trying to get them to voluntarily sign the consent agreement. And we just haven't been successful with that after months and repeated attempts, both, you know, showing up physically, as well as contacting them over email and phone.
Yes. So basically, your intent and what you would like to do is to have us approve to take legal action, as recommended by Bill Kelly. And just real brief, legal action means what to the resident?
So this is, you know, we get asked this question a lot about, you know, there's a lot of confusion as to what the town can do in terms of enforcement of ordinance violations. So we always work on voluntary consent, where, or voluntary remediation, where, you know, we issue a notice of violation, we say, these are the things that you need to do to correct the problem, or the, the violation of the ordinance. And then they do what they agree to do. They sign a consent agreement, and they do what, you know, the town has required of them to correct the violations. We're usually very successful, you know, great compliance with residents in correcting problems, when unfortunately, we aren't able to come to that point with a property owner. We have to take legal action, it's bringing them to court. And Bill can tell you more about what that looks like.
And I imagine they're really trying to get the, the use of legal action to be a, a bit of deterrents with a specific requirement or penalty.
Right. And, and the only way that we can, you know, there are fines for these types of violations, but we can't impose the fines, only the court can impose the fines. A consent agreement is when, you know, that usually, our highest preference is that they're going to voluntarily remediate the action, and, you know, hopefully, we don't have to impose a financial penalty. Sometimes the violation is so egregious that we have a consent agreement where we impose a financial penalty, like a lot of the tree poisoning, cutting, and that kind of stuff is an example of that. This is a very unfortunate circumstance, where truly all we want is voluntary compliance. We've received it intermittently, but not consistently. We haven't been able to contact the property owner and get them to sign a consent agreement. So really, our only option is to go to court and, you know, seek financial or impose fines and other remediation that Bill can tell you about.
Bill, what would you like to add?
I want to, is Jeremy okay?
Yes.
So, as Audrey just said, we have sort of a repeat offender who complies when pressured, and then goes away, doesn't communicate, and then he does it again. So the real focus is, you would vote if you make a motion to approve a land enforcement action against Mr. Gloss, for both myself and the health officer, which is Chris Farley. And we're going to get an injunction, so that he can't keep doing it. So we don't have to keep doing one-off situations. There'll just be a prohibition for the future. Deterrence was the word you used a second ago, Chris, and that's exactly what we're looking to do. So since it keeps happening, and he just isn't terribly cooperative, he appears to be cooperative, and then he goes away. So the order from the court to stop doing this, and then the opportunity to then return to court for contempt motion, if he does it again, is a lot quicker than bringing a brand new case. So that's really what we'll be focusing on.
And, and what sort of penalty or fine is there potentially for him in this particular case?
Well, the, the way that you send out a notice of violation, you give a deadline and say, fix this by X deadline, whatever the date is. And if the person fixes it by that deadline, then there are no penalties, because they complied with the order. And he's done that to an extent. So there won't be a big penalty in terms of fines, because at the moment, he's stopped feeding the crows and the seagulls. But there will be attorney's fees that he has to pay to the town to proceed and get the injunction of relief. So that's, those two things, the attorney's fees and the injunction of relief, be the main focus.
How much do you anticipate that is, what are we looking at for a number?
Legal fees?
Yes.
We, we spent a couple hundred bucks plus to file and get him served with process. And then as far as legal fees go, probably be in the nature of a couple thousand dollars by the time we're done. It depends, and if he wants to push it, we actually have to have a hearing. We'll be in court relatively quickly. We file these, and he is required to be in court within about four to six weeks for an initial showoff. Sometimes the court will have the hearing right then. So Chris and I will have to be there for the initial showup event. And sometimes the courts will say, or it depends on the judge, will say, okay, who are you? How many hours do you need for the hearing? How many witnesses? Okay, come back in four weeks and let's have the hearing. So we might have to go back twice. So not a lot of variables, and a relatively compact and economical case to prosecute.
Does he still have any way of getting, of avoiding this? He knows this is on the agenda tonight, or?
Not from my perspective, no. The, the, the trail is, is, we're at the end of the trail. We're now going to court.
That's pretty clear, Chris.
Do you have any, any questions, or?
No, that's pretty clear. Thank you.
Is there a motion regarding this, this item, then?
Yes, I move that we move forward, move forward with legal action as outlined by Bill Kelly.
This is just not, I, I wish there were, I don't, I, I don't want to vote yes on this. I understand the reasons.
What's the reason? Can you say why, why you don't want to vote yes to go ahead for legal action?
Because I have compassion for the person. And I, it would, I worship, we're more than three of us tonight. It's just the kind of thing that I, I just always, in the past, I tend to resist this sort of thing, where people complain about their neighbors. And I know it's a different kind of, see, the, the guy gets so much joy from the birds. And, you know, feeding the birds isn't a crime, and the def, I, I understand some of the reasoning, where the definition of a song, we, we permit the feeding of songbirds. And the definition of songbird, or not songbird, and I, I appreciate some of the arguments that John presents. And it also, you know, it wasn't the real goal of that ordinance.
Allison, if I might, just, this might help you a bit. I've viewed the videos. There are lots of birds, dozens at a time. They go to the neighbor's house.
I know, and I've seen some of the videos too, where I find the level of surveillance of your neighbor's property.
Wait, wait for-
Sorry, I've seen the videos.
Wait, wait for-
And, and the lady has some susceptibility in terms of, as I understand it, in terms of her health. So this is not contained on his property in terms of the consequence. This is not your typical situation, where you've got the property owner who is the, the king of their castle. This is bleeding over into the neighboring properties. This is a different situation.
Yep, I, I, I agree with that. I, I, I do think that the level of surveillance of that property has gotten a little out of control. And I understand that the neighbors feel like they need to do this in order to document everything. But it, it, you know, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I'm not going to stand in the way of it tonight. But I do think some of the complaints about this have been unreasonable. And I'm trying not to overreact to some of the unreasonable complaints I've heard about what is clearly unreasonable behavior from the neighbor. But sometimes the things that the town forces, you know, enforces or doesn't enforce, and pursues or doesn't pursue. Yeah, I'll, I'll vote for it, so we can go forward. I, it really can't be two to three. Can you explain why that is, Bill? That it, I mean, two to one, that, that rule about the, it has to be unanimous? It can't, it's not a majority of whoever's present?
It has to be a-
There's a state statute that would allow two to one. However, we have a charter that says three or four hundred votes are necessary. So that's why.
That darn charter commission strikes again. Okay, fine, I will just, I'm ready.
You second it?
Oh, I don't want to second. You have to second.
Okay, I'll second what Ken.
All right.
Any further discussion? Move to a vote. Those in favor?
It's me compromising with my colleagues.
I know, I understand. I know, I understand. Three zero. Thank you for your opinion, Bill. And let's just hope that this does do the proper amount of deterrence to get the right action done for all the property members involved. Thank you. With that, do we have a, a motion to adjourn so that we can move to executive session one, MRS 405 BE concerning legal duties?
Move to adjourn.
So moved, I guess. You want to make it a bundled motion of?
All right, so Justin is on this Zoom for this?
Yes.